I'm going to call the August 19, 2025 Committee, the whole meeting. Ms. Henry, it is now six o'clock. Would you please call the roll? Ms. Henry? Would you please call the roll?
Yes. Alderman Walters?
Here.
Alderman Tush?
Yes.
Alderman Hayden?
Here.
Alderman Asia? Alderman Emerson?
Here.
Alderman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Morales?
Here.
Alderman Mims? Alderman Krezak?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Motion for approval of the August 12, 2025 Committee, the whole meeting minutes.
Second.
Ms. Emerson, you have motion second by Ms. Garza. Ms. Asia just walked in. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
I was absent at that meeting. I'll have to abstain.
Alderman Tush?
Yes.
Alderman Asia?
Abstain.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes.
Alderman Morales?
Yes.
Alderman Krezak?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next is the fiscal year 2025, 2026 Department Budget Presentation. First off with Parks, Dave Turner, Parks and Recreation Director. What do you have for us?
All right, good evening, everybody. Here our budget starts on what I have is page four of 49. I would like to turn that over to page five, our goals and objectives and achievements. Our achievement, the LWCF grant, Project at 53rd Street is now totally complete. So we have received all of our reimbursements, and that is a done deal. It was a little over a $1 million project. We also just recently passed a sales tax to increase to one quarter cent to help maintain our parks. We still need, another goal is we need to create some focus groups to have discussions with the Raytown Park Board, see what future goals we would, our community would like to see, what other type of improvements and assets that we could add to our park system. And let's see, and then moving on to performance measures, page six. There's our goals for some sports teams participants. That also includes the Little League down at Little Blue Trace Park. We are fully staffed on full-time employees, shelter houses. Those are our goals for our shelter houses. We pretty much top out around 260 because they are rented out every weekend. So we are pretty well staffed and full on our shelter house facilities. Coming over to the expenditure, page seven, we can see budget for Personnel Services. That is our full and part-time staff, supplies, services, and charges. That is our mowing contractor, our private security contractor, our tech support, porta-potties, trash services, things like that. Repairs and maintenance, those are the projects that are, we do in-house, whether that is in-house repairs, electrical, plumbing, adding replacement drinking fountains, walking trails, things like that. Capital expenditures, those are our grant projects typically. And again, we just completed a $1 million project. And just this morning, we applied for our first reimbursement for the HUD Omnibus Grant. So we have submitted that information. We'll see what it takes to get a reimbursement from them, and then we will be off to the races on that $3 million funding for 53rd Street, Terry Copeland Park, and for Carnegie Park. Let's see, capital, operating transfer, that is our TIF payment. Budget appropriations, that has been a funding source for the BMX, and we have reached the end of that. They are financially very well off, and they are fully sustainable. We will stay in touch with them. We do write a permit for them to use the BMX track every year. So we will be in contact with them. That is still some of our infrastructure that they are using. We consider that parks. It was paid for through parks funds. And so, but financially, they are not in need of any more grant funds from the Parks Department. Five-year budget trend, we had a big one in 2025 because, of course, we had $4 million of grants that had to be shown in the budget, even though we didn't get to spend all those funds in that budget year. We had to show that we were appropriated those funds. If you roll over to page nine, expenditures, they're in the pie chart. The capital expenditures are, again, a big majority of what we show there. We're, I do not believe we will complete all of our HUD grant, the Omnibus Grant, next year. But we are going to start drawing down, hopefully this year, be able to get a good start on that, get our skate park equipment replaced, and get a lot of those projects out to bed. So we'll see where that is. That is not, that is a grant that is 100% fully funded. So when we get an invoice from a contractor, we will send that invoice to HUD. They will do a wire transfer to us, and then we will be pay it using their money. So the money will be there when we need to spend it. Again, Personnel Services, that's our next biggest item, supply services and charges. You know, our mowing contractors and security contractors, trash service, the repairs and maintenance, again, our staff projects there. Utilities, we did have a slight increase in utilities because we did add a new park property at Terry Copeland, 53rd Street. So that is going to come with some more charges out there. And then the transfers, that is the TIF. Revenue over here with property tax is currently our biggest source of tax funding. The general sales tax, this year, we budgeted $362,000. Because of the increase in sales tax with the quarter cent, we will be doing, splitting that somewhere in, when that kicks in. We're thinking that's going to kick in April 1 of next year. The taxes will start being collected. The first payout to the Parks Department probably will not be till the middle of May at some point. So that did not double our eighth cent sales tax funding, but it is prorated, so to speak. Services and charges, that is all of our team fees and our shelter house rentals, and tennis funds that come in for our programming. Reimbursements and interest, those are bank charges that we receive back from investments. And then our big one, our grant funds. So we have, again, $3 million out there that we have applied to start receiving some of those funds in this current budget year. And we'll see if we can get to the end of those funds in the next budget year. I would like to see that happen, but we'll see. Expenditure by type, we have did that here two pages, three pages back. And then on page 12, our five-year budget trend, as you can see, fiscal year 2022, 2023, our fund balance was fairly flat. But again, 2024, we had a couple of these big grant awards. So that's why there's multimillion dollars more money in those budgets than there was previously. Those are all grant funds. Let me come down here. The fund balance, that's the last thing we needed to talk about here, is that fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, slightly over half million, $570,000. The fund balance at the end of next year with this budget that we have here, it shows at $524,000. And again, there will, we budgeted this year, not knowing what our sales tax numbers were going to be. So we budgeted, like, next year, we're operating under a one-eighth cent sales tax. So we most likely later in the year may come back and say, there's other projects we could be doing now that we're receiving higher funds. So just to be aware of that. And then this in general terms, the last page there, 13 of 49. We have a comparison side by side fiscal year 25 budget to the 26 budget. And we are lower in many aspects just because of those grant funds, the million dollar grant funds that we just completed. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to address that.
Mr. Walters?
A couple of questions. On your goals, objectives, and achievements, are these looking forward or backward on page five of 49?
Yeah, page five, that is looking forward. And again, we've been working on this budget since June. So some of those have already been specifically the-
Have you met with your focus groups yet?
No. No, we had done that in 2018, I believe it was. We had some focus group discussions on what projects we should be pursuing. And again, we started applying for grants to achieve some of those goals. So we're at that point again where we've achieved enough goals where we need to talk to the citizens again and see what type of facilities they would find most useful. Is it an amphitheater? Or is it pickleball courts? You know, just questions like that. What would they like to see?
The reason why I bring it up was, and actually you brought it up for me, was the pickleball. I do get requests, why we don't have pickleball. I said, well, they stripe the tennis courts, but that's not the same as-
They're not, yeah, they're not standalone-
Unless you got a dog to chase down the ball named Pickle, it's not going to work. Because it's a lot of chasing the ball.
Yeah.
And I was just thinking, from my experience, that maybe you ought to track how much use is being used. I know Carnegie, there's not a whole lot of use being used on the tennis courts there, but Coleman, it seems like one of them is used quite a bit. That's where they use the classes and stuff like that. And there's also pretty much traffic there, but there's not a whole heck of a lot on the other one to the south. Behind the Paul Diamond, maybe because of the home runs.
Yeah, we, that one is avoided mostly. If, you know, the ones to the north are a little more popular. But again, we just were hosting Raytown High Tennis Team down there this afternoon. The kids are, you know, high school kids are practicing down there as I was coming here. And then we'll have a adult tennis league later tonight, starting at seven o'clock. And then we do host our tennis, youth tennis lessons there as well.
Okay, so you will be using. The reason why I ask was on the question of pickleball. You're probably not going to see a lot of people out in this kind of heat playing that. But as it gets cooler, you will, and I'm not sure of the dimensions, but I'm pretty sure the dimensions are where you could literally squeeze two pickleball courts into what is currently a tennis ball court. Find a way to imaginatively stripe it or-
Yeah, if you played, what would you call it, perpendicular to the net, you could actually fit courts in on, you know, one side of the court, the east side of the court, and the west side of the court, basically, to, and play on either side of the tennis net. There's enough room to do that.
There is. Okay, well, that's a possibility, but that's one of the things I know people in a focus group would be interested in. And of course, ongoing operations of the parks, particularly for those that live around them. They are always interested in what's going on. So thank you for your presentation.
The ones out of Carnegie, are they not marked for both tennis and-
Yes, on, at Coleman Park, we have tennis courts that are marked for tenon underlines. Two of them are marked for tenon under tennis, and two of them are marked for pickleball. And that's the same at Carnegie Park, Coleman Park. We have two marked for tenon under youth tennis lessons, and two marked for pickleball.
Very good. Ms. Hayden?
I just wanted to say, great report. And then I just wanted to thank you and the Park Board. I remember when we did the focus group, I was on the Park Board at that time, and thank you for doing what the people have requested. And again, we're not just listening to one particular demographic, but the majority, and going with what they have requested. The dog park, for instance. I did not realize how many residents in Raytown have dogs and want at the park. I don't have a dog, but the majority of the people wanted a dog park. And what do we have? We have a dog park. So thank you for that. And also, thank you guys and the Park Board for your work in trying to find different revenue sources and going after that, and trying to make sure that it's not too much of a burden on the city of Raytown, and going to try to find those revenue sources with the grants and that kind of thing. And for your continued work, still trying to find additional revenue sources and not giving up on that. I think you guys have done a great job with managing that. And I look forward to hearing what, listening again to what the people are saying to see if it's changed any since 2018. Pickleball is becoming a little more popular. But also, I've heard a lot of people say they want an amphitheater. So it's just listen to the people and go with what the people are saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morales?
Yeah, I was going to echo. I agree with Greg. Pickleball is a big deal.
Yeah.
If that would bring in more people to the city, spending money or whatever, I think that'd be worth exploring it. I did have a curiosity question. Sport team participants in 2025 is 160, but you're anticipating 410 in 2026. And I was really just curious, what's driving that?
Right, okay. So those are individuals. And what is driving that is that we had a couple of numbers get combined. I had our basketball participants and our goal for the youth Little League baseball. They don't sign up with us. That is another organization, but we are in support of them. And so those numbers kind of got combined to show that. So I was expecting there to be another line. Where those are kind of split up a little bit, but that's all right. If we get 410 kids that are playing baseball and basketball, I'm happy with that.
Ms. Carter?
Yeah, I just kind of want to reiterate kind of what Ms. Hayden was saying, is that really good presentation. Also, I know that going out and seeking those other revenues is also can be very time-consuming for you and your staff because it's not as if we have a grant writer. So I really appreciate all the time and effort you and the rest of the staff and the city puts into actually securing those grants and taking the time and effort to do that. And then also, I know I wasn't here in 2018 with the focus group, so I'm really excited to see what they're going to say they would like and how we proceed moving forward. So again, great work and appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. I do also have to say that puts a higher burden when we get these outside funding sources on the Finance Department because they have to reconcile all this and do a lot of the reporting. And it puts us in a higher audit class, so it is also a burden on other departments, not just the department that is awarded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, as usual.
Oh, well, thank you.
As usual, thank you so much for how hard you and your staff work on it. And then thank you for the Park Board also for standing behind and help, you know, standing behind him and helping him with getting things done that you all are responsible for. Thank you guys very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to point out on page 12, the graph that's on top, you can see each one of the actuals are a lot lower than the budgeted. That's actually year-to-date numbers. It's not the entire year showing on that. So at the end of the year, it'd be closer to whatever is budgeted typically.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know that. That is a help. All right, next one is the Police Department Chief, Robert Kiel. What have you got for us, sir?
Evening. Good to see you all. So I tried to forecast what might be of interest to you if I'm sitting up there, but I'm sure I'm not going to cover it all. So I'll provide that information and then obviously turn it over for some questions. I'm going to focus generally on Personnel Services and Capital Expenditures. I'm going to combine those into some bullet points. And then, is this on? Can you hear me? There we go. I'll try and get closer to it. So with the exception of some rising costs that are driven by factors out of our control, many of the areas remain flat. The increases that you see are due to the addition of the four officers that you, thank you, that you approved while I was gone, while Jared was here, so I appreciate that. Also, the addition of a full-time emergency management position, which I'll speak to in a little bit more detail momentarily. And as well as we've allocated some overtime funding for FIFA 2026 because that's a necessity. And also Phase One of a major radio project. That's the acquisition of 31 handhelds for the officers because they are no longer supported. It's a planned obsolescence, much like your phones. It's just a business scenario for the radio vendor. So one of the things I wanted to focus on a little bit was, I'll preface it with this. As far as a full-time emergency management position, it's arguably the most, if not one of the most important positions that I've asked you for since I got here, if that gives any context to it. Emergency management's evolved in its own standalone professional discipline. They offer advanced degrees and graduate programs and a number of certifications, the complexity of the world with cyber threats, pandemics, severe weather, mass casualty events. It's no longer, especially for a city this size, because there's even smaller ones that are pursuing a standalone position. It's no longer really effective to have it as a secondary duty. It needs to be a focused responsibility of an individual. And I could literally speak to you for an hour about all the things that it can do or will do. But I'll just touch on a couple of them. In, you know, keeping the city emergency operations plan updated, internal emergency procedures for here, for anything that might come up. The coordination for unified preparedness for police, fire, public works, schools, our CERT teams, after-action reviews. They're the point of contact regionally, in the state and federally, for FEMA and CIMA, and they spend a lot of time working with MARK. Just, even if God forbid we had a small incident, just processing the recovery of funds through FEMA and CIMA is its own discipline. So the complexity of it has gotten to the point where you really do need that standalone person. I could go on and on, but it will be a total net for everything in this city, from the schools to the citizens to the CERT teams to here, and we'll have that asset here. The wonderful part about that is, once we get that asset in place within about a year, it will sustain itself with grant funding. Because of available grants for the position itself and around $50,000 a year worth of equipment, it will be a self-supported position once we get through the first year. Also, we rarely have critical incidents that are actually on the calendar, but FIFA 2026 is a critical incident, and it is on the calendar. And that person, whoever it may be, will be intimately involved in local, state, federal planning, and bring everything together so we have a collaborated effort. So it is, it's a really important position. That said, that is really where our funding increases were. So I'll just open it up to what you all would like to know more about or what questions you might have.
Ms. Carter?
Thank you, Chief, again. Great job on all the things that you're doing out in the community and raising the, just presence of the Police Department. In regards to the Director of the Emergency Preparedness, whatever you're going to call it, what is your timeline since FIFA is coming up, like, within a few months?
Like to have them in place and here working by December.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I will have the process to the city administrator well in advance of the actual approval of the budget. So I've already talked to Dwayne, and about an hour after you approve it, we're going to get it posted. Just because we do have, you know, the sooner the better. And we need to get that person here, get them acclimated. Obviously, they're going to come with a lot of knowledge, experience, and expertise, but we need to get them plugged and played as soon as possible.
Yeah, because I know FIFA already has an emergency preparedness team in place that makes up a variety of people, including utilities, that are part of it.
Sure. And it's likely if it generates a lot of interest here locally, it's, it wouldn't be uncommon for that person to have already been part of some of the planning processes, and they will bring that, they'll bring that here, whoever it may be.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hayden?
Chief, again, a great report, as always. The emergency management position, are we talking one position or a team?
One.
Okay.
No, it's one position. So here's how that generally, here's my vision. It is, it's one position until it needs to be more. But there is also a significant amount of grant funding out there for an assistant. But, you know, I think until you, I think that the acquisition of personnel has to be extremely defensible. And so I think it will take a natural, organic growth. And if that person needs an assistant and it can be justified, we'll be in place by then and be positioned and have the check boxes done where we would, in advance, probably apply for some grants for that. We just need to get through about the first year because there are some significant requirements. And these folks are some of the most grant-savvy human beings I've ever been around, and that in and of itself is extremely complex. So right now, it's one, not a team. Most of these people that are immersed in this, they perform like a team, though. It's pretty amazing when you watch somebody out. I know people that were in their facilities when the tsunamis were predicted. And we're not necessarily, it's kind of like volcanoes, we're probably not going to be subject to a tsunami. But they are all in for their discipline in what they do, so. It's a long answer to a short question.
Is it going to be an additional person? Are we fully staffed currently?
Well, after you gave us the four, we're working hard to get there.
Okay.
Yes, no, it's an additional position.
Okay, and then that person, is he going to be, he or she, going to be a fully-commissioned police officer?
No.
And then, okay.
No, in fact, it is such its own special, it's much like the crime analyst evolution. It's caught up to that. You know, crime analytics is its own specialty, and there's a lot of certification. So you would, you would have mission dilution to have an officer, it would become one of those secondary duties. One or the other would become secondary, and we don't want that. We want that primary focus. And just the continuing education and training that they will go to to stay on point with everything requires them to be completely focused on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Emerson?
Thank you. I had one question on your expenditures by type under the capital expenditures. There's nothing for '23, '24, and '25, but you have $114,820 for '26.
Was that under capital expenditures?
Expenditures, yes, uh-huh.
I couldn't quite hear your question about the amount.
Well, for four years, you had nothing, and now you won $114,820 for the new budget.
Oh, well, let me, I can outlay the capital expenditures a little bit. So the 2025 budget was 446820. This might encompass your, an answer to your question. So there's a, there's a delta of 327,799 between '25 and '26. So what's included in that globally are four vehicles and upfitting and the 31 handhelds. But what mitigates those numbers is $116,000 of that is grant funding. That doesn't come out of the general fund. $115,000 of that is public safety sales tax, which doesn't come out of the general fund. And then one of the four vehicles comes out of the public safety sales tax. So I'm not sure exactly where that amount falls. But those are the things that bring that back down to where we, to the same number, pretty close to the same number. So it may be one of those in there. Does that clarify it?
Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Walters?
Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Mr. Walters?
Yes, Chief, I do have a question regarding the management position, and in particular with FIFA coming up next summer. Are we going to be doing, doing an upgrade of policing in the Raytown area for the event?
What do you mean by upgrading?
For instance, I anticipate that you will probably see an influx of people who want to park it wherever they can, just to stay the night.
Sure.
And go down to the game. And I can tell you, as people, most people in Raytown say, we really don't want that happening in our neighborhood. We don't want it happening in our parks. And I just wonder, is this something that would cover the FIFA or the position you were talking about? Would that include community policing for that event?
Yeah, it's, it'll be, it'll be a very holistic, inclusive plan. And we will, when the timing, when we know more details and we get some more intel about where all the venues are going to be and the teams and things like that, we'll have an operational plan that we'll share generally. Obviously, we don't always share the specifics because we don't want to telegraph exactly what we're going to be doing or not doing. But yeah, this person, it will be a collaborative effort of, of all the things we talked about, the emergency management position, police, fire, EMS. I mean, we recognize the fact that we are just down the street from the stadium, and that's going to present some unique challenges. We don't have that plan in place operationally. We've had some tabletops downstairs about it, and I go to all the planning meetings with KCPD. I've known Abby Martinez, who runs point on that for, I don't know, 38 years, and she's a wonderful human. I hope she survives this. I think, you know, she wants to borrow some nerve pills if she can find them whenever I talk to her. But yeah, we're going to, we are going to make changes and adjustments based on the demographics and the needs that, that this critical event brings our way.
Okay, the reason why I bring it up is- Okay, the reason why I bring it up is because I, as I said, I anticipate there will probably be some issues. Particularly, I mean, right now our park department is having to go out and police their own depart, their own parks during curfew hours just to keep people from deciding this is my home now and I'm going to spend the night here. And it's, it's not a good condition. And I'm afraid of what might happen if you have an influx of people who don't even speak the language. It's going to be.
It's a valid concern. We will be reprioritizing with more details to follow. That's probably about the best answer I can give now until we get down in the weeds a little bit more. But we will definitely be reprioritizing our response.
I just wanted to be clear on what my concern is.
Sure.
We've had some horrific things happen at some of the parks over the summer and this is just during regular times.
It's a valid concern with something this big coming. And we are certainly not turning a blind eye to it, believe me.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Eventually, we will be at a point where we can give the board an update as to what steps have been taken towards the whole thing. One of the problems is, is that the international level changes quite often. So therefore, the regional, state, the county and the local level has to change all over again. And it just gets real confusing. So when we're a little bit closer, the ad hoc committee that I have will be making the presentation along with everybody else to you all, let you know what we've got set up and where we're going with it, so.
I wanted to piggyback on that, Mayor. You know, it is, in a lot of ways, it's more art than science because of all the changing dynamics. So I can tell you that when I start to add up the number of years of experience that I see in the rooms, I think that, you know, I, I think that trusting the intuition is in that room. There'll be sort of a natural tipping point where we know that we can get really down to, you know, rock bottom. But if we spend all the time now and have to perpetually change it, that's just going to result in frustration for everyone.
Yes.
Version 1.9.7.6. So there'll be, there'll be an appropriate tipping point where we'll start to formalize this more. And having that position, kind of running point on parts and pieces of it. The other nice thing about that too is it'll be a wonderful outreach for the non-law enforcement aspects of this because they'll be involved with that also.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is just, this position is not a permanent position.
Yes, it is.
It is.
It's forevermore.
Well, that's what I thought. And you painted a kind of a picture that, a bird's eye picture of how it was going to trickle down. And it was almost like hiring a Superman because it's going to hit the school district, the neighborhoods and everywhere.
It's not a bad analogy, it's pretty good imagery.
Well, I, I don't understand, you know, exactly. It's not a department, it's one man. And, you know, what it's going to do and how it's going to do that. And at the same time, when we look at emergencies, that's a relative term. What an emergency, we have an emergency every time the fire department, the police department, any department's called. So I just, and how that fits in with the county and Kansas City. For example, we talk about the stadium, but stadium's not Raytown. So creating this position, it sounds really good, but I don't understand how they're going to do that and what they're going to do.
No, that's a legitimate question. So maybe I painted a little different picture. It is, it does appear to be kind of Superman. But what this person is, is the best thing, if you can think of a linchpin. This person isn't, this person has 168 hours in a week to do everything that everyone else has to do. But this person is the linchpin that pulls all of the other resources together. This is the person that is the representative and the collaborator with the local, the state, the county, the federal folks. This is the person that looks, it's kind of like project management. This is the person that looks at all the necessary tasks that have to occur and figure out who needs to be assigned the tasks, when they need to be done and what they can do on their own as far as training. By no means does this person have the horsepower or hours to actually be Superman. But they will be an incredible linchpin to pull the resources together because the emergency management resources that exist in our world today are broad and deep. And unless you have a dedicated person to pull all that together and collaborate it, it just sort of goes by the wayside and gets ignored. So the person's more of a, of a linchpin than the one that's going to be doing all the work. They'll run point on a lot of things, but they'll be outsourcing a lot of the work and things like that.
Aren't we kind of a small player when we mix that with the county and Kansas City?
No, actually, there are a lot of jurisdictions smaller than us, municipalities even, that are pursuing this as its own unique discipline. Because, you know, the worst thing you can do is not be prepared. Because when an event occurs, it isn't necessarily what the fallout of the event, because there will be some bad things that happen, there will be some tragedies, there will be flooding, there may be lives lost. What that event does is it causes a backward look on your preparedness. It causes a backward look on the process and effort that you levied to become, to be ready for it. And if you can check those boxes, then it's a tragic event or it's an unfortunate event. If you can't check those boxes, then it becomes optically and probably in reality, an event, a tragic event that could have been prevented or mitigated. So we're going to do the prevention and mitigation on the front end and this person will be running point on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Yes, going back to what we were discussing just a few minutes ago. My concern is, I know, for instance, or at least I've read that they are going to do basically a perimeter around the stadiums there so that they will not be using it as a parking lot per se. And that this actually pushes the outside of that perimeter closer to Raytown. In fact, it touches part of Raytown at that point because not that far from our homes.
I've heard that, but I haven't seen that. There's a big difference.
The report I received came from the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I've, well, I'm sitting in the meetings and I've, I've heard discussions of that, but I have not seen that in any operational plan. I'm not saying that it won't be there. But it's kind of one of those things where we talked about where, you know, we don't know what we don't know and we haven't gotten some of the guidelines from Homeland Security or some of the international FIFA folks. So, you know, I think if that is the case, then we'll, we'll respond and adjust appropriately. I've heard that a lot, but I haven't seen it in a plan.
There's other things I could share, but there's no point in that right now. What I was thinking was, as the park department uses focus groups, and they've been very successful in them on trying to plan for future events, perhaps this is something where you might be able to reach out to the community to have focus groups. Because those that are going to be affected by it, they know who they are. I mean, the people are aware and they know there's going to be a lot of people. I see it downtown, my, you know where my business is down there. It's going to be ground zero, from what I can tell. I mean, we're three blocks from the police station and everything around there. What's happening with the freeway, all the work on the freeways, that's being to clean up the city for the event. So we're getting some good stuff besides with what's coming forward.
Well, it sounds like that would be an interesting task to put on that emergency management person.
If you could have some focus groups, I think that would be helpful going forward so that people can know what to expect. Because sometimes it gets lost in transition going from what's met up here or anyplace else at the Chamber of Commerce or something like that, but it doesn't really get out to the public.
Well, that's, that's a perfect example of a number of different ways that when you have a linchpin like we talked about, they can coordinate with Tony. They're, one of the biggest things they do is the external outward facing communication and gathering the intel that we often don't have operational time to do. So yet another reason to have that person.
I'm glad to hear that and I hope they do that as you're suggesting they will be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Ms. Garzett.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of address the radius thing. This has nothing to do with you, Chief. I know that, because I've sat in several of those meetings, especially with the Kansas City Chamber. And they've indicated that the mile radius is what they've seen in other communities. But the other communities didn't have the parking area that we have around the stadium. So that mile radius is basically our parking lot and not even all of our parking lot. So I think that's kind of the misinformation that's out in the public.
Well, a lot of times, you know, the best predictor of future performance is past behavior. That is not necessarily the case with this event. Because every venue is so specific. It's why they trust in the local professionals to, to add the intel. You know, there's a lot of variables that will need to be considered. You know, it's already has a perimeter, mostly highways and roads. So every venue will be treated in the unique nature that it needs to be. And I think sometimes people look at the past and think that's just going to be a boilerplate. There are some boilerplate things with FIFA, but there's also a lot of organic growth just based on, based on the uniqueness of the community.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Appreciate your time.
We got about 20 minutes. What do you got for us? Good evening.
So what you're saying is I should talk real slow?
Sure.
No, I'm just joking. Good evening, just want to talk to you about the Public Works Department and all that we're going to be doing next year. So want to start off with some of the things that we did great this last year and our goals and objectives and achievements. We utilized City Works and our asset management software to be able to keep track of what all we're doing. We've had about almost two years' worth of data and we can see where our shortcomings are and things that we can improve on and different itemized stuff like that. We achieved the approval of the geo bonds. And as you guys may be aware of, that we are, we've got two projects up to 60% design already. So our goal for this next year is to get that, our first project out to bid around October of 2025. And I'll be speaking tomorrow of that. And then all our ARPA projects, we got those all started this last year. We're almost completed. We've almost got this one out here completed. We're hopefully to start mill and overlay at the end of August, early September. So hopefully we'll have a new road by the end of October. So everything is going really good with the ARPA project. So those were some really significant goals that we had and that we achieved. So that's kudos on the whole department as a whole. Some of the performance measures that we have on page 27, we just kind of go through those. Just, you know, some things that we can keep track of. We did some street sweeping. This year, we didn't get as much as we needed to this year. We didn't get a full round around the city, so we'll work on that next year. Some of that was due to fluctuation of staff. But one thing that we are right now, we only have three more maintenance workers and one mechanic left to hire out of 15 positions that we didn't have when I first started. So we've come a long way in filling those positions. We're also working slowly but surely on replacing signs. Our current signs that we have around town have a reflectability requirement on those, on those signs. And if you kind of think of it, it would be very difficult to replace all of them at once. So what we do is we just kind of replace 50 or 60 signs at a time. We, we keep track of that again on our asset management and just replace those signs. We don't necessarily have to literally replace them. What we do is we take the old side down, we take them to a facility. They just put a new, like a sticker, if you would say, that has reflective ability, which reduces the cost. So that's one thing that we are doing on that and that's the sign replacement program. And the number of potholes, we try to keep track of those year after year and which has kind of been really good. We've gotten two trucks kind of up and running and we really have kind of reduced the number of potholes that we've had. It just kind of depends on the year of the snow and the weather, which kind of relates to that, to the season of potholes. Sounds like a movie theater. This year, for the 2025, 2026, we reduced one position as the Assistant Public Works Director. As listed on page 28. And then our general fund, we're basically doing the same thing. We haven't changed a whole lot. We've increased just a little bit on different utilities, different things that have increased like copying, just different, you know, things that have increased that makes our budget increase. So nothing really exciting about the budget on the, just the general fund for Public Works. Page 30, it was a misprint on that. So it's kind of moving forward on our sanitary sewer fund. The Assistant Public Works Director came out of two different funds. So it was only one position, so part of it was funded out of the general fund. The rest of it was out of the sanitary sewer fund. So the 75% of that one was also removed as well. On the expenditures for the 2025, 2026, as you can see that the capital expenditures have dropped drastically on that aspect. That is also due to the ARPA fundings. We've had a lot of projects, about almost $1.8 million worth of projects that we had used for ARPA for sanitary sewer. Those, those projects have now been completed. And so we don't have as plethora of money for the sanitary sewer. But the capital projects that are going to be listed for that is our SSES, sanitary sewer evaluation for park that we have to do for Kansas City due to breaching contract that we have to do in order to meet the regulations for our sanitary sewer system. Then moving on to our transportation sales tax. As you can see, funding revenue is about the same. Our expenditures is about 1.23 or 1.3 million dollars for next year. If you look on the budget trend in the 2025, you kind of see the big giant budget kind of go up to 3.6 million dollars. That's part of the rollovers that we had last year for the Raytown Road. We started late, so therefore the money that went with that project rolled over for that. So we had about almost a million dollars worth of rollos for that year. So that's why you see a higher level of budget on the 2025. So the budget that was supposed to be for the Raytown Road 2, from 63rd Street to 67th Street is planned for the 2025, 2026 budget. And then the stormwater fund, as you know, we're working, I just kind of touched on a little bit, on the geo bonds. The first project will be near the Raytown Road and 65th Street. So we plan to start that project, put that out for bid for 2025. So depending on when we put it out for bid and how much money we need to put depends on where the geo bond funding comes in. So I can't tell you exactly when that's going to be just yet, but that will also affect on where that falls in the budget. So if we use some of the funding now, it'd be in the 2025. If we open it later, then it will fall in the 2026 budget. So we try to best estimate within that budget to split the geo bond funding for the stormwater project. And that's all I have for the Public Works Department. I'll entertain any questions.
I do, with wondering on, I'm new to all this. So on the signs that are being replaced, whose responsibility for the, making sure that the tree lines and stuff like that's where the sign is visible?
Depends where, how far the brush or the tree is. If it's really close to the, to like a sign, a good, a good example is on.
There's one up by H and H, right across from the apartment complex. There's a sign, it's a street sign.
Yeah.
But the trees are all, you can't even tell.
If the tree comes far from the, from the person's property, then it's the person's property. But we'll try to help out with that and mitigate that. The one I was thinking on the Spring Valley, they have a bush that's right there on the U.S. property. So we try to keep, keep that trimmed up. We try to address all those issues as they come up and address appropriately.
Okay, I have another question.
I'm done.
Done.
Time, time out.
Oh, and on the potholes. Do you guys keep track of where the potholes are to where, you know, like from year to year to, so that we know if we need to actually repair a road instead of just trying to patch things?
Yes, so there's two, two things to that. About five years ago, we did a evaluation of all the streets and we rated those streets. So what we did is we looked at those streets and said, okay, this street has the worst, worst rating. So that one gets put higher up on the repair list than the one that just got repaired 10 years ago. So we look at that and then the other part is the potholes. So we can overlay that as well. Then two years ago, we redid a evaluation again. It was a little different equipment, but it kind of overlates very similarities to see how fast we were deteriorating. So we looked at that, compared those two and they're pretty much the same scenario as far as which ones are the worst, how much, which ones are still. as far as which ones are the worst, how much, which ones are still in that process. So what we try to do is address those worst ones first and then also depending on if it's a arterial street or a local street. So I don't know if you were on the board yet, but we kind of gave a presentation on our maintenance program because we've been, generally been doing arterial street, arterial street, arterial street. And we get a lot of complaints in the local areas. So how do we address getting local streets fixed as well as arterial streets? So what we decided to do with the amount of money that we have, because for us to address everything for our maintenance, we need 5 million plus to address as a maintenance program for, for the city of Raytown. We have barely a million. So how do you do that? How do you stretch that million appropriately to get the best maintenance for what we have? So what we came up with is to do an arterial street one year, a local street the next year, and then the third year is kind of do maintenance, crack seal, that sort of stuff so we can save money to be able to do the next large project.
Okay. Thank you.
There's some other products, too, that they use, instead of just milling and overlaying everything, that are also very good products. They've used on a lot of streets. 83rd Street is not a milling and overlay. It's a different product, but it's a very tough product. And you weren't on the board at the time, but at the time, we had 40% of our streets that needed to be dug up and we had a bond and it got defeated barely. And that would have taken care of a lot of the neighborhood streets, things like that and would have left us more money on the regular budget to do our milling overlay, so.
Yeah, I was just mainly concerned about like the roads that are used frequently by the school buses and, and the high traffic areas.
Yeah.
People trying to beat lights and things like that.
Yeah, we, we, we know a lot, a lot about those areas and we try to address as much as we can, you know. Unfortunately, the prices keeps on going up and we're still kind of stagnant in that area of, of maintenance.
Ms. Emerson.
Thank you. On the sanitary sewer fund, the expenditures, the supply services and charges and the repairs, the projected is very, very low compared to the 26 budget that you want.
I would have to get back to you on that. I think one of that is the CIP for the sanitary sewer system. We have not upgraded that in the last 10 years, so we need to upgrade that. Some of it is, I can't put my finger on that right now, but I will get those answers to you.
Okay. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Walters and Mr. Morales.
Yes. The question I have, you mentioned something in your presentation about a breach of contract with Kansas City.
Yes.
What was that exactly?
So part of our contract with KCMO is that we have, we do not give them more sanitary sewer whenever it rains. So we, so the contract that we currently have is, doesn't really spell out the true what an INI is, but whatever that was in the contract, we have to follow. And we have breached that portion of the INI, which is infiltration and, infiltration and inflow. So whenever it rains, we get a surplus of water going into our sanitary sewer system which gives more water for Kansas City to treat. And it's in our contract that we have to go to a certain level. We have exceeded that. So in that contract, it says that we have to do a sanitary sewer evaluation of that area of where it comes from in, from our area of town to Kansas City. So it's what we call the Park Lane Sanitary Sewer System. So that's basically kind of Blue Ridge Boulevard going down to 63rd Street all the way across. So if you took that upper third part of the city, that's the Park Lane Sanitary Sewer System that goes into Kansas City. So we have to do a evaluation on that and then present a reasonable timeline in order to fix those issues or whatever issues we follow.
It's a relatively slow, small area compared to like the Little Blue Valley Sewer District, so.
Right, correct.
Are we doing that in-house, the evaluation?
We, we cannot do a size that big and still do all the other activities within the city that we are currently doing. You know, one of our biggest and what I consider are proud things is that we touch every sewer line in our system at least every five years. Very few municipalities are able to do that. That's why KCMO is kind of making us do this is because they, they're under a consent order from the EPA. So because of that EPA consent order, we also contribute to that same area, so they're trying to make us follow our own contracts, so.
I understand. Another question I had, the, going forward, you were mentioning the bonds that'll be used, bond projects for the, the storm sewer bonds. Do you have a sheet that shows what areas you will be addressing going forward?
Yes, we do. I do not have that with me now. We've, we've shared that a couple of times, but I can get that, we can get that to you.
I'd be interested in looking at it. When we do those types of projects, just like, I'm sure Raytown Road, you're going to resurface, so I'm, I'm assuming.
It depends on how, how much money we have allotted in for the storm water system project. So we can, what we're trying to do is be smart with them. You know, we, you know, when we first looked at one of our areas, you know, when, when we first came up and said $1.7 million to refurbish the stormwater, we're like, great, you know, let's get on it. So they started looking at it and now that one project is now $4 million. So that's over half of our stormwater project. That's not what we really communicated to our citizens. So the, the communication is that we would fix our infrastructure. So what we will do, we'll probably try to do best to repair what roads we can with the money that we have, but also stretch out as much as the stormwater infrastructure to fix.
Well, what we have, for instance, with 59th Street and Raytown Traffic Way, will that be repaired?
Yes, because that's on the, that's on the MDNR.
Yeah, that was, that was a different money source.
That was a different, yes. So that, so that will be milled and overlayed. That project will be completed by the end of October.
I can't understand. I was under the impression that this was part of the storm sewer projects would also include where we would be doing repair work on streets because we knew we'd be tearing them up.
That's what we wanted to do, but the, the price tag kind of jacked it up a lot further than what we expected.
Okay. Going forward harder, whatever is my advice to you because that's kind of a hard hit to take. But there's, one other question I have is that is, you're right when people are upset about, you know, their neighborhood streets. I've got streets in my ward and I'm sure everybody else does. They may be over 30 years old since they've been overlaid or, you know, or any type of surface we fix, you know, the pot or repair. Is it possible that we may have, be able to look harder? Do we have any funds that were not expended this year going forward in this year's budget? Have you bottom lined everything out?
We've bottom lined everything out for this year.
Okay. Do we intend to, I've, I've heard a rumor, and I don't know if it's true or not, that we intend to repave the entire parking lot here at City Hall?
That is part of the MDNR project.
Okay. When we first presented that to us, I remember that, because I was at the meeting and my understanding it was to do an entrance on the west side and to make it wider, but it didn't say anything about repaving because does that money have to be dedicated towards that, that particular purpose?
As, that project has to be encompassed in that part. So basically, I can't take 59th Street and Raytown and use that same money and use it at 85th Street. I can't use that same money. So anything that's within that-
You can't use it on residential streets that are 30 years past.
Yeah, I can't, I cannot move.
It's a shame.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your answers.
All right, let's wrap this up. Ms. Garza, you're the final one. Go ahead.
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I really appreciate the fact that I feel like you stretch your budget to get the best bang for our buck as a city, so thank you.
You're welcome. Yep. Thank you for your hard work. Some of the bonds would pass, we would have had a lot more money to do these things.
Yep.
So, all right, do you hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Ms. Hayden, Ms. Garza, you have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, we are adjourned at 7 o'clock sharp.